Opposed, motion carries. Approval of October seventh, twenty twenty four minutes, please.
Bill moved.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. First item on the agenda is to approve the payables as presented and five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fourteen cents.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion?
Yes, I got a question, why is there a bill in there for the excavator, then there was a credit? Okay, that answers it. I just kinda thought that was strange, I seen that. I thought, boy, for that, there, those two variants, we got that pretty cheap. Okay, good enough.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number two is Sheriff Pingery with a quarterly report and an office update. Good morning, Pingery.
Basically, for the quarter of July, August and September of twenty twenty-four, the sheriff's office took in a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and everyone since. After paying our weapons permit fees to the state, um, that left us a total of a hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars in lost funds.
Been busy.
The average inmate count, thirty, thirty-five?
Thirty-five, uh, thirty-seven, somewhere in there.
Need a motion for this?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's quarterly report.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Just to the board where, um, we do have one of our deputies, it's kind of up in the air right now, but he's been told he's in the National Guard, that he may deploy in the spring of next year, um, over the Middle East for a year. Um, and if that's the case, you will see us advertising to hire a deputy once he gets his orders. Um, and just so the board knows, um, when he's deployed, he does not get paid by us or our insurance. So, the money, there won't be an object. And his deployment and coming back will also coincide with Lieutenant Tom Francis' upcoming retirement in March of twenty twenty-six.
Cause I was gonna say, you get, you have to, you have to guarantee him his job when he comes back, I remember I.
Absolutely, yeah.
So that, that was gonna be my next question, so.
Yep, absolutely. It said, he, he's came to talk to us about it, it's up in the air, who knows what's gonna happen, but that's what he's been told. Um, I just wanted to, you guys see an ad, that's what's gonna happen. He did get deployed, um, and have his orders, and that way we won't be shorthanded.
Perfect. Appreciate the update.
Yeah, thank you.
Sound like a good plan there.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Might all work out.
What was that?
Said it might all work out that way.
It might, we'll see. Hopefully he doesn't have to deploy.
Yeah.
Best case scenario, but, uh.
Alright, well, thank you very much for your update this morning.
Do you have any questions for me at all? Alright, your question's stopped over.
Thank you.
Okay, item, the next item on the agenda, number three is secondary roads. We have a drain seventy-seven RFP review slash approval and a department update. Good morning, Zach.
I sent over the request that the folks that I put together. First time you saw this, but, uh, basically wanted to see if you had any questions or concerns with anything in there regarding timeframe, what we're trying to accomplish. I also did, uh, a map here this morning showing the area that we're looking to double encompass this, uh, to project people's work. Basically from Eighteenth Street, used to grant right down to Eleventh Street. Basically looking for a lump sum quote due for labor and cost of moving dispose of the trees, selected trees and, and, uh, any junk debris in that, in that channel. Um, also asking them to give a give a, uh, per hour rate for laboring equipment. For labor and equipment, um, additional work that we may need to add. I guess start off there with any questions with that?
Yeah, so I, I drove this, um. Like, on that drain, is there an easement then? Like, what about the neighbors and the people in the backyards?
So the, the drain has a, a easement basically of sixty feet, so thirty feet either side of the channel for egress and ingress and egress to be able to
Yeah.
Obviously with its in backyard, so there's gonna have to be some caretaking, um, where there's fences and everything else. And, um, probably some discussions with property owners on, depending on where the selected contractor wants to try to remove these trees, how they wanna get out. There's some areas where you don't have to go through properties where there's access points off of, uh, a road or, or adjacent to a road or whatnot, what have you, or maybe even across the creek. Um, but there's some areas that are gonna be definitely more challenging.
Yeah, there's, I feel like it's gonna be a very challenging task.
It, it's a, it's a def- definitely a dense area.
You, you gotta walk it once, Mike.
Mm-hmm.
No, I know. We're there.
It's something else.
I also wanna make it very clear that as the trustees of a drainage district, it is our responsibility to maintain and control the flow of the water. It is not to do beautification and, and things like that. It is our duty to do strictly flow of water, and if that is obstructed by any means, that is our job to get that cleaned up. Um, cause I do think you are gonna run into some scenarios where they're gonna feel it's beautification. Well, that's not the case. So whoever RFPs in response to this bid, we just have to make sure we clarify and communicate very well what, what the job of what their role and responsibility is.
Very much agree. Um, the, the intent basically is to take anything that's in the channel and up the bank. Um, and then any other dead or fallen trees that are completely dead that are, um, I guess could be threatening the, the channel. Um, Paul went through and, and did account to come up with these numbers, so um, all those trees are, are, are marked within reason. Um, so it, uh, it's it's gonna be a challenge.
There is some property that has been washed into this, this drainage, um, area as far as either a garbage or a tire. Would you expect that to be removed?
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, there's, I mean, there's a shopping cart, there's a tire, there's things like that, there's not as bad as I envisioned, I guess, when, when the, the area that I walked. Um, and from what Paul told me, but there are definitely a few things that are, need to be removed as well. That would fall into the junk debris category.
So when we walked this last spring, there was some personal property that, um, just over time, people do, and, and I understand that they, you know, would maybe put a bridge up or, you know, to make it look so they could get across it. What do you guys do in that scenario when somebody does have a bridge or a fire pit or something that's along that creek?
I guess my intent would be is we'll, we'll try to leave, leave it alone, but if it is within the area where they're trying to cut trees out and whatnot, I mean, it's, it's, it's probably shouldn't be there. So, I mean, it's one of those things where the contractor needs to try to avoid and, and work around those things, but um, it's, it's also something that could be damaged or in the way when it, part, as part of the construction and removal of those trees as well.
Okay.
So, I'm just going back to, is there easements to get? I mean, if you can only use the easement going down the drainage, some of the places you're gonna have to go through someone's yard to get into them.
There are some places where they're gonna have to, and, and.
To get equipped in there.
Right, and that's gonna have to be some discussions made with, uh, with the contractor, with those private landowners. Cause I, I don't wanna, I guess, guess where they're gonna wanna come in or where they're, cause someone might have a different opinion of someone else, so.
Yeah.
Um, there, there's definitely gonna have to be some conversations there. Um, and we can help facilitate that, but I think that's something that, that it's gonna be the responsibility of the contractor to find their access points.
Yeah, well, I think part of the purpose of the, what you got your timing here is to do this over the winter, so there's frozen ground, so it don't have as much damage and stuff.
Most invasive.
Yeah.
Yes.
At least, at least that's the intent, that's, that's what we're hoping for anyway. We'll see what Mother Nature does for us.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to approve the RFP?
Yeah, and then also I'd like clarification on where you're gonna advertise this. Are you gonna do paper, radio, Facebook?
It's, uh, this is, uh, as far as I'm concerned, this is your guys' project, wherever you'd like it to go. I mean, it's one of those things where, um, you know, it's, it's a this is a repair to the drain, so it's something that we can direct a contractor to do. So it, it doesn't have to be advertised any more specific, it's basically wherever we wanna go with it, so.
Well, I personally think we should advertise at least one, once or twice in a newspaper or something. I mean, at least then we made an effort to reach out to everybody. Cause like, like, like we were talking, there, there's a lot of people gotten out of this business, and there's a lot of new people getting into the business with the ash tree board. Uh, and everybody's gonna be busy too, so.
That's why I, I think you're gonna have harder time finding a contractor to do this.
Especially in this, especially this type, this.
This is not gonna be a fun job.
Yeah, so I think we need to advertise it. And maybe we have to reach, we may have to wind up reaching out of the area too.
Yeah.
And on this, I wanna make sure everybody's aware, on this proposal, it is due by November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four by three P M to the county engineer, so we'll have to make sure, that's, it's a month from today, so. Uh, I have newspaper and radio and I can cover it today a little bit as well. Um, but yeah, advertising I think would be good. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve the request for proposals.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. As far as, uh, department update, um, as you're probably aware, but have been, been a couple of weeks since I've been here, but the M sixty-six grading project is complete, the contractor moved out here a couple of weeks ago. Um, we had a few things to touch up ourselves, we are done with, with that work, so as far as the grading goes, we are, we are done. Um, it's, uh, hopefully Mother Nature will help us out at some point to help us get some grass established, um. Southern part, the way southern and northern parts of the project do have a little bit of grass growing from the first little bit of rain we had when, when we started the project, but obviously the rest of it's, uh, it's pretty dry, so. Um, we'll deal with that as Mother Nature allows us to, I guess. Um, the other thing I was gonna mention, we do have, uh, HMA resourcing plan for that for next year, um, we're gonna have, gonna be having a, a DOT letting for three of our asphalt projects, um, we're pl- planning, hoping to be in the February letting for that, so that will take care of the um, milling and, and filling, and then also the paved shoulders with M sixty-six, three miles south of Manning there, that work we did the grading. Um, we also have two other asphalt projects, um, from Highway seventy-one east towards Litterdale and back south, I believe that's roughly five and a half miles. And then also, uh, three miles from Highway seventy-one going west, uh, through Mount Carmel over to the Maple River Road, so. Um, those, all, all those projects will be tied together, um, there's separate, separate contracts, but be tied, they'll be tied together. Hopefully we can get some, uh, better, better bids that way by kind of lumping all together, so.
Question on that Litterdale project, how far south are you gonna go? We gotta ask that question the day.
I got a map from him on it, right to the church, chase the stop sign, right to the stop sign, basically, we.
Good, that's what.
Probably will go through the intersection, just with the mainline pavement, but, uh, that's a, a little bit up in the air as, as we, as construction hits, we'll build a, define that.
Kinda told him, we thought that word was that, but we weren't sure.
Yep.
Okay, enough.
That's all I have.
Good.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I will say that M sixty-six project looks very well.
Looks awesome.
Yeah.
Long time company, it was, uh, definitely needed and, and, uh, it, it turned out very well, just took a, took a little while for us to get there, so.
Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is a public health department update. Good morning, did you want me to put any of this on the document cam? Are you good?
It's all public information, so if you'd like to, you can put it here and screen it up what I have.
I if you can, that's great, if not, that's okay too.
Might wanna turn that mic on, Maggie.
Good morning, Maggie.
Be able to see it there.
There, perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, good morning. Um, fall, the last time we came for our department update was in June, so fall, we've had all of our immunization audits, cold and flu season, so our school audits, we actually just wrapped up within the last three weeks or so, that was a hundred percent certification rate throughout the county. Um, same as last year, the year before that, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year, we did have one missing. Um, but we're fairly close to that a hundred percent consistently every year, so we're happy with those results. Um, our childcare immunization audits are gonna be starting here in the next week or two, and that's not due till January, but upcoming leave and everything like that, we're getting that done early. Um, and all of our daycare facilities and even the school nurses have been really accommodating with that, so I'm thankful to them for being very prepared this year. Um, we did see an increase in records that needed to be translated, transfer students, you know, whatever the case may be, so, um, just a bit different process for those, we typically ask that, whether it's a school nurse or the facility coordinator send those to us ahead of time, so we can translate those and get them back to them, if there's anything missing that can be administered before our immunization audit, they have the opportunity to do that, so that immunization certificate is not counted as invalid or missing anything there, so, um, we would do that translation and then also send it to the state immunization coordinator at Iowa HHS to just double check our work and make sure everything is good there, so we do have a two-step authentication process for those immunization certificates, but everything else is pretty standard. Our sunscreen grant for the summer, we did get one gallon of sunscreen from the Iowa Cancer Consortium. Past years, we've just brought those to the pools um, and dispersed sunscreen there. Last year, we had a sand rag ride in there too, but um, typically it is just the pools, we wanted to reach a broader audience, more adults, so we included the Chamber of Commerce golf outing and then state baseball this year, and both of those went over really well, so we continue to get state baseball in Carroll, I'll likely apply for an additional gallon or two, but it's also weather dependent as to whether people need sunscreen or not, so, um, yeah, people are really happy with that being an available resource to them at those events, so we'll continue to do that and add that into our summer outreach. Um, flu vaccines, we do an annual resource guide that's sent out to employers, the schools, so they can offer flu vaccines to their staff. What's included in that is a list of all clinics and pharmacies in the counties, what their hours are, if they're able to offer an onsite clinic or just um, at their own facility and specifically the contact person that anyone would need to reach out to to schedule and their business hours, things like that, it's fairly detailed, um, just to promote those vaccines, flu vaccines for um, larger employers to their employees. So we sent that out here in the last couple of weeks, and we do make that available to the public via all of our social media pages. And our own county employee vaccine clinic is next Tuesday, the twenty-second, from two to four here, or so. So everyone's wearing that, did, that flyer went out to all employees and pay stubs. All of our policies are now on an annual review schedule. Um, if you'll recall, we got around seventy to seventy-five policies from St. Anthony's. Um, we've since gone through all of those and really edited them and shaved them down to what our current department state looks like. Um, and we took the last year doing all of those policies, so now we're on a annual review basis, so that started in July, so we had six policies that were reviewed and approved from last year, and then we added one new policy for our CPR classes to include those. Just some different events listed here on the left side that we've done the last couple of months, Senior Fun Day, our, um, car seat safety, we did a number of different checks there last couple of months. Uh, we also participated in the Fire Department Open House, uh, the twenty-first of last month, then we did car seat safety there. And that was a really good turnout, so we'll continue to do that. And add some other events as needed. Um, we did bring, uh, CPR hands-only skills to the haunted Bison Hollow at the conservation two weekends ago. Um, if you're, follow our Facebook page, there's the hands-only cubes is what they're called. Um, and we received six of those cubes um, through our emergency preparedness grant, and what they do is essentially monitor and test for your depth, your recoil and your speed. Um, for hands-only CPR, so it was really cool to just get people thinking about CPR, either test their skills or you know, introduce them to it, so, um, people were really impressed with that, and we had a good turnout from that, we um, were able to do skills with twenty-two adults and eighty-five children. Children weren't super able to do the CPR skills to the best of their ability, but it does get them thinking about it, which we're happy about, and it starts the conversation at home of, you know, in an emergent situation, how do we respond and, you know, help these people, so, um, it got the conversation flowing, which we're that was our goal, and we've had a lot of interest in getting CPR classes established, so we're working on that. Um, now that we have our CPR policy in place, that will help, and so we're just figuring out the scheduling for those and all that good stuff. Um, last time I was here, we did discuss Stop the Bleed funding. Um, and I just kept the synopsis in there, as we're still working on that, we do have one school left that is waiting on staff training, and we have to have that training in place before we can deliver those kits, so all the other schools and um, stadiums and everything besides the one have been delivered, so we're just waiting on training with that one. Um, and we'll likely receive some sort of funding this year as well for Stop the Bleed, it's just a matter of how much. We do have to split it with our service area, which includes Dallas and Warren and Polk, a lot of bigger counties. And last year, they didn't take as much of the funding, so we were able to get more. This year, it sounds like they're wanting to take a bigger portion of that money, so, um, to be determined how much Stop the Bleed funding we get this year. Um, and we likely won't know that here till the next three to six months, I would say, just depends on what their other funding sources look like, so, um, more to come on Stop the Bleed, that's why I left it in there, so. Um, we do have a student preceptor this fall semester from the University of Iowa. She is a nursing student, and one of their course requirements is a public health-focused nursing course, um, in which they complete a preceptor project in their home counties. So, we do have one this year from Carroll County, um, and she and I have been working together on a um, project to address mental health and substance abuse disorders. Um, what that all entails is she does a literature review, um, and her and I meet once a week in person and just essentially discuss how her project is coming along, and then just exposing her to public health as it pertains to Carroll County and across the state. So she's gonna be coming with me to a few regional public health meetings, just to give her that further exposure, and then her and I meet more one-on-one to discuss her project and things like that, so that's been going really well, and the goal of the project is to, again, expose her to public health, but also, um, her project with mental health and substance abuse disorder is to come up with some sort of intervention or um, resource that she can implement, that then we can continue on for years to come. Um, so we're working on what that looks like, and her project is due the end of November, so we'll likely have it completed well before then, but, yeah, so more to come on that, that's been really exciting. Um, next public health meeting is on November twelfth, for any that want to attend. That's about all I have. Um, just for your information as to my upcoming leave, I am due December eighth. So I will be taking the twelve-week, um, FMLA maternity leave that's allotted by the county. So if I go on time, that would put me returning around March third. So, if maybe cooperates, we'll see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that exact dates will be made aware, I'll send that to Courtney and I'll also put it on my out of office email notice, but yeah, if you have any questions or need to reach out to anything, Carrie and Megan are well-prepared for my leave, I will also be available in emergent situations and come budget and I will be made available for that as well. Um, but reach out to Carrie and Megan first and then come to me, but I will be available should you need anything.
I do have one question, you talked about this, buttons on CPR.
Yeah.
Do they show them then where they're at as far as the rhythm and pressure and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, it's really cool, I'll bring one over the next time.
I, I, I just, I remember when I took the class for first responders, we had to get that down, so perfect, the timing and everything.
Yes.
You bust, bust blood vessels in your hands trying to.
Yeah. Yeah, there are, um, indicators on the bottom of the cube, so what it is, you place the cube on this CPR mat. Um, and it will tell you, the lights will light up on the bottom of the cube that show you if you're going deep enough and allowing for full reco- recoil on the cube, if you have the right rhythm. Um, and so one side is depth, one side's recoil, and one side's rhythm, so the goal is to get all three sides lit up green. And if one is yellow or one is red, then make adjustments as needed, so it does show that feedback, and it's, it's pretty cool, yeah. Carrie saw something similar at the Iowa State Fair, and that's how we found these, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I do have it. I do have that comment, maybe.
Yeah.
Um, in next Saturday, opioid funds that are in a C D are gonna become available. Do you have any best practices from any other counties? Cause a lot of counties um, gave it, I shouldn't say gave it, delegated it to public health to be dispersed. So keep that in mind, you don't have to come up with anything today, but I think you or Carrie attended a couple of the first meetings on that.
Yeah.
And so, with no decision being made, and I think that pot has grown by fifty or a hundred thousand more, so a quarter million now.
I know there are a few naloxone initiatives around the county, I know New Opportunities has their naloxone initiative. Um, so there are players that I know would be interested in participating in that public health as well. Um. But yeah.
This is something to keep in mind, that money, that it's probably gonna be coming up.
I know other counties have set um opioid committees. Just with those stakeholders and that's been pretty successful.
If you hear of any great ideas for us, please let us know.
Um, we do get free naloxone from the state. However, we do have some limitations with that. Some other counties have done um, what they're called um. Narcan vending machines. I'll use Narcan and naloxone interchangeably, they're the same thing. Um, Narcan vending machines where somebody can just come and get.
See, we were thinking something more preventative instead of.
Okay.
Supportive.
Okay.
But yeah, just something to keep in mind.
Sure. Um.
Like the way you put that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's supposed to be.
Well, and I I that's one of the things I think that's.
But it's just that money's hanging out there and we still haven't found a good way to put it to use and. Yeah, we might have to, yeah.
We've had some requests and we just haven't.
Yeah.
Right, yes.
I think with that amount of funding, though, you could do both. Um, we do get the Narcan free, it's just. They have to come in and has to be during business hours, they have to sign a form, it's just not as easily accessible. Um, but that state funding does not cover the vending machines or any sort of other dispersment opportunities. Um, but so other counties have just used their own county funding to get those vending machines. Um, I don't think they're too terribly expensive, but just another option is way to disperse. Along with the education piece and the prevention piece too, but.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Gina, it wasn't because we didn't want to make action on it. We just hadn't heard a good.
Yeah.
Source of those funds.
Preventative.
Yeah.
Or, yeah.
That can stay. We need the funding.
Yeah, it keeps growing and yes, we can put it in our CD.
Well, I appreciate the update very much. Um, good luck.
Thank you, Maggie.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to authorize Chair to sign the BTC Incorporated Managed IT Services Agreement for the County DHS Office. Um. The reason why you're receiving this, because obviously it requires a signature, the only thing I didn't. Really like is that this is a two-year term, a thirty-six month. Three-year term, um, when there's allotted amounts that go forward, this eighty dollars. Can we? It's null and void after a year, because every budget year with the government, it changes. We can't um. Delegate. Okay. And that's fine that it was done, but I think we might want to look at potentially only doing it yearly, because you can't allot government or tax funds. Um, more than a year in advance, not even in advance, but in for a budget season. My two cents, and it's my signature, so.
This, this evidently has to do with their their server on the phone system, right? Because otherwise our IT department would be able to handle it. Am I correct, Courtney? Or our hands are kind of tied on it.
You guys can approve it, I just was avoid.
Do you want to wait?
Gonna renegotiate for a yearly contract instead of.
We can sign the contract. I'm just trying to make sure you guys are well aware. It's null and void if um. It really actually is insignificant, because it doesn't mean anything after a year, whatever budget season you're in.
You can have him send a new one, we'll table it. What was that?
Have him send a new one, we'll table it. Go on.
I'm sorry, I can email.
Have them table till next week.
I can have, I can email Mike and just tell him that we can only do a yearly contract. Would you like me to do that, Courtney? Okay, that'd be great, please. Thank you. Is that all right, the rest of the board?
Yes.
All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve a plat, and we have one from Steve McCurdy.
Didn't she send us two? Or was one of just another?
One was an aerial.
Okay, oh, one was just aerial, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve this map, pressed by Stephen McCurdy.
A second. There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number six is to set a public hearing for fiscal year twenty-five budget amendment. Courtney sent along a spreadsheet so we can kind of take a look at. Um, where this amendment needs to take place.
So I'm looking at sheet that basically breaks it down by fund and department. Um, start with general basic, um. Now, the first few are PIS and environmental health, and that's just moving the passport fund. Um, so the board decided to have a different department do it. We're gonna move the money that was allotted. From GAS and put it in environmental health. That is the 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 zero effect of the amendment, but get it in the right department. Um, then we have J L Employee Insurance, and that was an unseen. Change to where their employees policy. Um, public health, there's several of them there. Um, I talked to a couple of board members about that, but. What happened is there was like three options given when they presented their budget. And the board allowed the whatever, the board selected what the board helped approve. For the budget and I had a different option in the budget, so it was just a mistake that got made, so we need to correct that. You get those right numbers in there. Um, so you'll see those reflected there as well. Then over on the revenue side, um, again, that's the passport revenues getting moved. So you can see the result on the general basic is twenty-four thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. Um, move down to rural basic, um, we got sheriff again, let the employee health, that's some changes made. Um, I know that looks like a lot, but we had um. Higher than anyone that had a family plan that the budget was for a single, and I know you guys have always been. Budget for a single and so, I mean, it looked at a lot, but a payment policy is pretty expensive for a year. Um, the other one, the library, um, that is the money that they did not request for the last fiscal year. They didn't get turned in in time or requested the wrong amount, I'm not exactly sure, but. Seven thousand three hundred fifty-eight is actually the fiscal twenty-four funding, so. We're gonna get that paid for now, because that wasn't approved by the board, it just. Either an error was made when they requested it or they didn't request the right amount, I can't remember exactly, but we need to get that taken care of. Um, so the rural basic is fifty-one thousand five hundred fifty-eight.
So that library, is that just strictly for Carol Library?
Down to the ambulance capital, um, Jamie had said that the board, this should have been in the budget too. Um, it doesn't affect the actual levy funds, because we're talking about local option. But there was gonna be money put in his capital for building improvements. Um, I look back on the minutes and that's what it was, so. Fifty thousand for local option is just getting put in there, so we can transfer that to the ambulance's capital buildings fund, so they can make repairs. There again, it's in local options, so it doesn't affect our levy or anything like that, or levy funds at best. Okay, and then, um, again, moving down to capital projects, again, a non-levy fund, but. The ambulance we have, um, that put fifty thousand in there that he'd be able to spend if he does anything this year. Um, there again, it's gonna sit as capital fund regardless if he does or doesn't do anything this year, but at least there's some in there in case they do do anything. Um, on the other side of that, you'll see the revenue coming in from. Our um, local option money to their general fund. And then there's just a couple conservation capital, some buildings, um, trail maintenance and then grant proceeds, I might could. Watching some emails, I can play what there is. So, um. With ten thousand is for a sign grant he got in conjunction with secondary roads for replacing county three signs on highways. Uh, grant funds will cover the entire expenditure, so just the money in and money out. So we have two bridges on the trail that we need to be working on this fall slash winter. We are working on the secondary roads on a plan, so not exactly sure what the cost will be. If we don't need it all, then we just won't spend it. We just wanted us some funds available in our capital. Um, so the total expenses. Two hundred eleven thousand four eighty-three, total revenue sixty thousand, so overall one hundred fifty-one thousand four eighty-three. Any questions? Okay, um. I am requesting um, October twenty eighth at nine thirty for during.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Um, nine, item number eight, manure management annual updates. We have two of them, one from Cornerstone, so section twelve Richland Township is a four-year plan. And Bob Danner, section twenty-two Newton Township, updated soil samples. And we are to committee report.
You go first. Uh, Wednesday, um, Scott and I, and UBI Emerald Club, uh, noon meeting. Um, we give a little presentation there, and I will say that we did have a lot of people ask questions afterwards. Uh, was, uh, they were, people are thoroughly interested in what we do, so. Uh, Thursday, the Rowan Hills meeting was canceled, I think I notified you that last week. Um, and then on Thursday, I did attend the Highway Thirty Zoom meeting. And also I attended the ISAC uh, Zoom meeting in regard to. Their legislative proposals and also on their change, their amendment to. Um. Amendment to their bylaws, and also there's a part of the program in regard to compensation boards. Uh, the one thing that that ISAC is just based, that amendment. That they're changed their bylaws just to uh, further uh, enhance what's their, as far as their um, IRS tax statuses. And one of the things that we will have to do is identify who are to be voting members on that. ISAC, so like us five here are naturally, any electoral officials naturally. But we'll have to pick those department heads and identify those, or not necessarily by name, but at least that's department.
Position.
Position, yeah. Um. And then, now, like I said, it's ten of the Highway Thirty-one, um, was really. Nothing great on there, just some lot of prodigy scoring on the east. Uh, they're evidently looking at putting a roundabout over on the east side order by somewheres by Boone, my understandings.
Did you just say a roundabout? How about no?
I vote no too. Um. And then I spent a lot of time trying to make connections with the people, so we can have a meeting with contractors on Maple River doing. Uh, getting better scheduling set up for that. This week I have a Monday city council meeting tonight. Uh, Tuesday tomorrow, I have CCGP Executive Board meeting early in the morning. And then at noon, we have CCG's regular board meeting, and then Tuesday night we'll give the candidate forum. And then Friday I have the ES Center Board meeting, and that's my week. And it's always subject to change. It seems like everybody's canceled meetings lately.
Um, today I have conservation, tonight, um, two mile discussion with the city council. Tomorrow night, Canada Forum, that's it.
Um, last week, Wednesday, um, I went out to secondary roads, looked at their claims and reviewed that drain. Seventy-seven RFQ, um, also spoke at the Emerald Club with Gene at the Conservation Center Wednesday lunch. Thursday evening, Regency, or I'm sorry, Region Twelve Policy Council. Friday, came and looked at payables at the courthouse, and then this week tonight, City Council meeting. Um, tomorrow, Executive Board meeting at the Recycling Center tomorrow morning. Tomorrow at noon, CCGP meeting, and tomorrow at seven, the Canada Forum at the Rec Center.
Okay, I can go next. Last week, um, I was so with Courtney, I set the agenda. I did come in Friday and went through the payables. I did sign the letter for Gene for that, um.
Rolling Hills.
Rolling Hills and Disagrees with the the assets. Then I had Region Twelve, um, the Development Corporation. We approved two new business loans and denied one. Um, then I had the Executive Board meeting and we did do some IRP business loan write-offs. And we did a resolution and approved it for a la- um, changing that housing line of credit. Then we went into Policy Council. Um, we get received a financial update, a transit update, a local assistance report and an executive director's report. Um, and out of all that, I'm gonna hand around this uh, Department of Local Assistance. It's kind of neat to see where some of the local money. Goes throughout Carroll County, and some of it's outside of that, but it's within the region. Then I had a meeting with Crawford County, uh, Board of Supervisors, more to come on that. And then I did reach out, I had a few people reach out to me about uh, the two mile zoning. Um, ordinance, and then I also met with Sarah up in the Assistant's Office to discuss a couple P and Z items. And a potential um, rezoning issue. This week I have the newspaper radio, um, tonight I will be attending the City Council Two Mile. And then I will also be attending the candidate forum, and I want to apologize, I am not truly crying, I have a cold. Courtney, what do we have for next week? Those on attendance? In order for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? I do want to make comment that we did set an agenda up on the front of the courthouse, so that we all can be in a public setting together, because it is considered a quorum. There will be no decision made tonight, especially on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. Any decision that the Board of Supervisors makes has to happen within our. Chambers. All those in favor signify.